The Lemonster City Council meeting is funded in part by the Careless Insurance Agency at www.decarelessinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
A minute, I just want to indicate publicly a few things. First of all, the planning board met on both of these petitions, 41-25 and 47-25, both of which are scheduled for a public hearing this evening. Under the statute, it's their obligation to make a recommendation to us before we can act. And in fact, at least on a legal basis, they did not make a recommendation. What they said or suggested was that 41-25 be denied, which is in fact a recommendation. And on 47-25, they suggested that it be given leave to withdraw without prejudice, which is not a recommendation. So we cannot proceed this evening on 47-25. I'd have to wait under the statute 21 days, which expires on July 7th, which is the... so the soonest we could act on 47-25 would be on July 8th. Due to vacations and scheduling and what have you, we can't get a special meeting established before our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is July the 14th. So it's not a whole lot of days, but we were hoping to try to get a meeting scheduled either July 8th or July 9th. If you look at the agenda, it reflects at least the potential for a special meeting on July 9th that has not been posted so far. And it won't be posted because we can't convene all of the councilors. And I think it's important, and I think the rest of the council would probably agree with me, that we have all of the councilors in attendance to be fair to both sides on this. So these petitions, both of them, depending on how the legal affairs committee recommends, will likely not be heard until July the 14th at the earliest. So that being said, I think that's everything I wanted to cover. And at this point, I'll turn it over to the Legal Affairs Chair.
So tonight, we have a public hearing on petition 41-25. Lisa Nugent of 45 Beth Avenue in Lemonster requests that the city council prohibit all horse and dog racing and any associated betting or wagering anywhere within Lemonster, Massachusetts by the following. amend Article 1, Section 22-4 definitions by adding the following definition: Race track. Any tract of land where horses or dogs are raced and where any form of betting or wagering on the speed or ability of horses or dogs are permitted or conducted. amend Article 3, Section 22-17, underlying district's table of uses under business -- under business uses to add racetrack as a listed use and to add the letter "N" for not allowed in each and every column for each and every district. amend Article 3, Section 22-18, overlay district's table of uses under business uses to add racetrack as a listed use and to add the letter "U" for underlying district in each and every column for each and every overlay district. The purpose of this zoning amendment is to prohibit commercial horse or dog racing anywhere within the city of Lemonster. So as you heard Councilor Danza, President Danza, explain, we did have this scheduled for public hearing this evening, but because of the delay that we've experienced, given what the planning board came back with, my recommendation as the Legal Affairs Committee would be to keep this public hearing open. We also notified the petitioner that we would not be taking any public comment this evening, that there'll be plenty of opportunity for public comment at the next public hearing when we intend to take action on the petition. So at this point, my recommendation from Legal Affairs would be to keep the public hearing open and schedule the public hearing to our next meeting, 7:14, and we can discuss the time.
Okay, well, it comes up on the regular agenda. I'll just poll Councilor Tossi.
I agree.
Okay. You want to read the bold language?
Yes, yes, I certainly can. The Legal Affairs Committee, this is on the agenda, for those of you who haven't seen the agenda. The Legal Affairs Committee intends to open this public hearing with no testimony and continue it to a meeting of the city council called by the president. Supposed to be a special meeting called by the president. However, given that not every city councilor can make a special meeting due to vacation schedules, we are moving this to our next regular scheduled meeting on a Monday night, which would be on July 14th. And we will vote on a time for that public hearing a little bit later in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I guess your next hearing's at 6:15, so we have a little bit of a wait.
Yeah.
He just scooted out.
The Lemonster City Council meeting is funded in part by the Careless Insurance Agency at www.decarelessinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
and 47-25 this evening. That isn't going to happen, and the reason for that is the planning board did not make a recommendation, at least on 47-25, as required by the statute. And as a result, we cannot act for 21 days from their public hearing date, which was the 16th of June. That 21 days expires on July 7th. The soonest we could have a decision or make a decision one way or another on 47-25, either in favor of or against, would be on July 8th. Because of vacations and scheduling, we really can't do that until our next regular meeting of the city council, which is July 14th. So in all likelihood, we will hear both of those petitions, 41-25 and 47-25, on the 14th of July in our regularly scheduled meeting with full public hearings and potentially at least decisions on both of those petitions. And with that, I'll let the Legal Affairs Chair take it from here.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing for the Legal Affairs Committee on petition 47-25. Brian Arfalk, attorney, on behalf of Crossroads Office Park LLC, requests to adopt the proposed Fairgrounds Overlay District zoning amendments. One, to amend the city of Lemonster zoning map to include the Fairgrounds Overlay District, the FGO, consisting of the following parcels: 670 Mechanic Street, MAP 445-27, Lemonster, Mass; 690 Mechanic Street, MAP 445-1A, Lemonster, Mass; 694 Mechanic Street, MAP 445-28, Lemonster, Mass; the city landfill property off Mechanic Street, MAP 441-1, Lemonster, Mass. Two, and to further amend the city of Lemonster zoning ordinance by adding a new section, 22-34, Fairgrounds Overlay District, allowing the following uses by right: horse racing, sports bar, recreation outdoor, recreation indoor, business and professional office, and apartment/multi-family dwelling. And the following uses by special permit: uses otherwise allowed in the FGO district that involve outdoor amplified sound and permanent exterior lighting, excluding horse racing and sports bar uses. The amendment also seeks to implement dimensional regulations in off-street parking and loading requirements. So this was first on our calendar at the end of April 4/28. It's been given further time. And this evening, as President Danza just explained, we were going to have a public hearing, but because of the planning board's non-recommendation, we're going to have a public hearing at the future meeting. So this language is on the agenda. Both petitioners for this petition and the prior one were notified that we would not be taking public comment this evening. And the comment says, "The Legal Affairs Committee intends to open this public hearing with no testimony and continue it to a special meeting of the city council called by the president on 7/9." That was something that had been discussed previously, however, because of vacation conflicts, we will discuss this at our next regular meeting on Monday, July 14th. We haven't determined a time yet, but we will do that later on in the evening. So at this point, Mr. President, my recommendation would be to keep the public hearing open and continuing it on July 14th. Can I ask you to check with my committee?
Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
Okay. And very well, we get to it on the regular agenda, we'll establish a time. Council Freedom?
Through you, Mr. President, I'm the Legal Affairs Chair. At one point, I know the attorney's here from KP Law. At what point will we be able to ask questions of him? Can we do that at some time tonight? Or do we have to wait? I think it's under your purview whether we can or we can't.
I would prefer to do that all at one time when the public can also chime in as well. That would be my predilection, if he doesn't mind coming back.
That's fine. Maybe Amy, as I was covering for her tonight.
Right, right. So, you know, the public obviously has a very deep interest in this, and I would want them to be able to comment at the same time as well. Okay.
Right, so at this point, we'll just continue the public hearing on July 14th.
Yep. Okay, unfortunately, we don't have any other business. Lucky for you. The rest of us have to stay here till our next, till the public forum at 6:55, which is the next formal thing on our agenda. Would you like to start the charades, Frank? You can get out there and act out a movie book or...
Did you know the great Grace Feil? How great is Grace Feil? Quarter day and quarter 24 hours or so in sports, Mr. High. Him and Tyler doing football, two championships. Kiffy Ron, Mr. High, coached the championship. He just scooted out. He's not a happy campground. Phantom. Not happy right now. His air conditioning system is broken. They haven't been able to... They've been there three times in the last couple of days.
Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. And most of you know, of course, that 41-25 and 47-25 will not be taken up later this evening, but on July the 14th. Just wanted to indicate that. So, the first person signed up this evening is Loretta Dankin?
No, um, I don't want to speak.
Okay. Next, Lisa Nugent. Okay.
Cut it away. Go to see, oh, you just want this way?
Yeah, you can just roll that, there you go.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All right, I won't keep you guys, you guys have heard from us quite a bit. But 41-25, I know that has been, little feedback on that so far, and that legal has actually ascertained that horse racing is currently not allowed with anywhere within the city of Lemonster. So, that putting language to the same of what 41-25 stands for would be redundant to some extent. But, I think that this, if you look around, is a prime example as to why we might want some additional language. Even though it's already currently not allowed, I think that it might help to add some insulation from any future proposals. And that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Michael Caputo.
Hey, everybody. Just wanted to speak briefly, I know we're obviously continuing-
If you could just restate your name and address, please.
I'm Michael Caputo, First Avenue, 21st Ave. Just, I know we're continuing to June, July 14th. Just wanted to reemphasize that, A, it's been great to see people in the town come out and make their opinions heard in a relatively peaceful forum. People have been polite and have generally followed the rules. I just wanted to, you know, emphasize again, you know, I think for most of us in Lemonster, a lot of us come here, have come here because it's got a lot to offer, it's a great, growing city. It's close to Boston, but it's still relatively affordable, and I think a lot of people are coming here, and I think it's growing for those reasons. It's got a history of innovation, there's a lot that this city has to offer and want to grow into. And I just think that there aren't too many cities that have looked back and said, you know, everything was going downhill until we built a casino. Maybe there's a couple, but they're out in the desert. So, just wanted to, again, see that, say that it's been great seeing them come out and make their opinions heard, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Caputo. The next or last signed up person is Amanda Smart.
Hello. My name's Amanda, you can call me Andy. I actually moved to 44 Rumberg Road five years ago, in the middle of, or towards the end of 2020, in the middle of what we thought was only going to be a couple months of a problem, that was fun. But Lemonster's been really great to me thus far, I live up over on Cherry Hill, I'm sure you all know that little area. I'm a little confused, I guess, on some concerns about horse racing, and it's like a really scary thing. Currently, by my definition, as a carpenter, and what my union has told me, is there's no dog racing that is to be intended on these fields anyway, nor would it be something anyone's interested in. And if anyone is concerned for, you know, the horses themselves, there's actually federal laws in place, and as someone who rode for over 10 years, yes, things can happen, unfortunately, when there's dysregulation or people don't follow rules, but that's why there's consequences to those. That's why we have laws, and that comes with heavy fines and even jail time depending on how misused any animals are. So, if those are the moral concerns, there really shouldn't be, everything would be fine, and this would be something that would bring us five mil- What is it, five? Help me out here, Jay. The revenue it was going to bring in.
One point two five nine a year.
Thank you. So, I know it's only two minutes for a timeframe, hence why it's so rushed, trying to make it succinct. And, as said, by right now, I think it's that we can't, there is no prohibited horse racing or dog racing at all. That's the beauty of amendments, you can change anything you want, as long as it's done by an approved committee and by vote of majority. Voting, right? Sorry, bad at talking. That's all, I don't want to go over my time, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, no one else has signed up. But if there is any other member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum, please step forward. Give us your name and address and what you want to speak on.
Good evening, Madam McIntosh, I live at 58 Viskaloid in Johnston Avenue. I've been out here five years. I clearly understand the concerns of my community and the elders in the community. And I see this from a different side, well, I see it from both sides of the track. Basically, I can understand the concerns of the landfill and what that could do to the community. The noise pollution, traffic, etc. But I also see it from fairgrounds' point of view, which I'm standing on their side, because they can bring more revenue and good jobs, union-paying jobs for people like myself who work at, live in the community, and won't have to commute outside to go find a good livelihood. So, I mean, that's basically what I have to say, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Do we have any other member of the public that wishes to address the city council this evening? Please step forward.
Good evening, thank you. Again, my name is Jorge Rivera, I'm the president for the Worcester-Fitchburg Building Trades Council. I represent about 7,500 families for the Worcester counties and Fitchburg counties under the construction industry.
Can we have an address, sir, please, for our records, an address?
Worcester County, so it would be 45 Hartwell and, it is not Lemonster, I do have members in Lemonster.
That's okay, we don't require you to be from Lemonster to speak here. 45 Hartwell, where? Let's see.
What is the? West Boylston, sorry.
West Boylston, okay, thank you very much, please proceed.
That's where our office is. So, representing 7,500 families in the construction industry, right, we have plenty of members here in Lemonster. Speaking on their behalf, I think it was, it will create a lot of local jobs, it will create a lot of permanent jobs, right? Good-paying jobs that are going to create a pathway to the middle class, where we're looking at perhaps even kids that are trying to create a name for themselves in the construction industry or in the workplace. This would be a good place for them to start their career. It would be a good paying job, it would be a good career where they can have in retirement with dignity, and they can work in a safe environment. So, on behalf of the members that I represent, I can, I move you to consider passing this particular project at the fairgrounds and the horse racing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Fernando Lemus, I am the president of UFCW, Local 1445. I reside at 40 Montician Drive in Fitchburg. I represent over 12,000 members in Massachusetts. In Worcester County, we represent over 2,000 members, but in Lemonster, we have over 100 families that my local union represent. And, I would ask that you please consider this project, the fairgrounds, because we believe that with this project, we're going to have good union jobs. Not only build union, but also once it open, it will be 100% union. So, we know, as my brother was just, Jorge was saying, after, we want to make sure that our members have a good pension that they can retire on. We want to make sure that our members receive a good health and welfare benefit. We want to make sure that our members are covered under a collective bargaining agreement, in case there's any issues, they can, they can come to their union. We want to make sure that our members have all the safety they need in their jobs, that they perform every single day. they perform every single day. So, on behalf of my local, and 1.3 million members across the United States, like I said, and 12,000 members here in Massachusetts, I ask you to please consider this project and to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the City Council this evening?
Good evening. I'm Lawrence for 69 Sheremah Drive, resident of Lemonster for about 16 years now. I wasn't planning on addressing this council, but I'm thinking about what the members of the audience have talked about, and for me personally, the concern about gas, if we've not studied, we can take a study of what is being emitted right now, but we don't know what it would be when horses pound on that landfill. We don't know what that emission control is going to look like, and we don't know how much gas is going to come out of that, first point. Second point for the city of Lemonster, and the time that we've taken since February to talk about this, 1 million is nothing. I would say that. And we cannot talk about 1 million and think that is a lot of money concerned, comparing it to what the city budget is, and the cost that will be associated with how much police officers will be deployed if there's an issue, with or without an issue, fire department, public works, name it, not to talk about the traffic. And the people who talk about it and for it are not even residents of Lemonster. And the data that they submit, I talk with colleagues of mine who signed because they're getting out of Hannaford and were told to sign it, they're not even residents of Lemonster. And we collect all this and we say that is fact, it's not fact. And I just think a good study should be done. The jobs that we talk about, temporary jobs, they're not long-term, sustainable jobs that we're talking about. The quality of the job, I don't know. Where is that study that shows that these are the qualities of jobs that are sustainable over a period of time? We're talking about, if it's a fiscal year decision, one-year decision, it makes sense. If there's a long-term impact on the city of Lemonster, it doesn't. And I want to plead with this council that, please, before we make any decision, or take any decision, or take any vote, there should be a study and a cost-benefit analysis detail on how that is going to impact us. I say this with a passion for a couple of reasons. I have my kids raised here in Lemonster. I am a resident, and I will probably die and be buried here in Lemonster, and I don't want that to be on my conscience, because I've lived a gas death before. 2,000 people wiped out in one day because of a release of gas. Ask me, and I'll give you details of that incident. Please, let this council take data that is proven fact and do a cost-benefit analysis before any vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Caputo. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the City Council this evening?
Mr. President. My name is Jennifer Flanagan Long, I live at 36 Leo Gagnon Way. I've served this city for 20-plus years as a state representative, state senator, Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, and now is a private citizen. We hear people talk about jobs. We see people that are sitting in this audience, all wearing the color yellow because it represents the union that they work for, the money they make to bring home to their families. We talk about sustainable jobs. We've heard something about the quality of jobs that are going to come into this project once the project is created. I ask all of you here, who is to judge what a sustainable job is or is not? We have restaurants throughout this city that have hard-working waiters, waitresses, bus people, cooks, line preps, and what have you. We have people who are working in office buildings, we have people working in the hospital, we have our fire and police that work day in and day out. Jobs that bring home money to people are important, regardless of what level someone wants to judge that to be. And I ask that when you take a look at this project, you take a look at the entirety of this project. Yes, is horse racing a piece of it? Sure. Six days a year, people are going to come to the track, the horses are going to be there. The environmental impacts, I hope all of you have read the studies that have been sent to you in your inboxes multiple times, so that when we talk about the environmental impacts, this is going to have oversight from the city and state, the same way landfills across the state have oversight from city and state. Everyone should be concerned about the landfill and what it can do to our families going forward. Everyone should be concerned about our families going forward. We're the plastic city. This is not the first time we've had to deal with certain industries where people were going to be affected 20 years later. I ask that you take a look at the entirety of this project as a place where we can hold festivals, and places where we can have our children work, and places where we can have community events, whenever we want. You want a skating rink in the winter, you want a festival in the summer, you want something in the spring to celebrate whatever day it is in the month, or do you want a Johnny Appleseed Festival? These are all opportunities that we get to create for our community if we do it together, and we do it with the entirety of this project. So, I ask that you look at the data, I ask that you look at the jobs that it can create for the people who live here. I spent 25 years of my career traveling to Boston. What used to be an hour is now two. That's two hours away from your family each way, that's four hours a day. What happens if something happens to your child and you're working out in the Boston area at union jobs, at waitressing jobs, at professional jobs, or even being elected? We've all lived that, you can't get back in time, traffic's not letting you get back in time. These are jobs that are going to be created to be sustainable in the city of Lemonster for our region. Yes, my address may be in Lemonster, but let's not forget, we still are the tri-cities, we are still the twin-cities.
Mr. Flanagan, I've given you 20 extra seconds so far. We're not voting.
So, I appreciate it, but I just want you to look at the entirety of your project, and I hope that you'll all look at the information that's been in your inbox. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a member of the public that wishes to address the City Council in the public forum this evening?
Ralph Crowley, 268 Spruce Street. I'd like to make a comparison to another city, the city of Niagara Falls, New York. Through the 1900s, they had a landfill for 80-plus years or so. The Hooker Chemical Company put a lot of its toxic waste in that landfill. The landfill was not lined. In the 1950s and 1960s, the city got this idea of building on that landfill. So, they built a school. Few years later, they built, they built a whole neighborhood on top of that landfill. That landfill was called Love Canal. Some of you may remember Love Canal from the 70s, it was basically the start of the Superfund program from the federal government. We don't want another Love Canal here in Lemonster. And I'm not on a butter, but I do live in Ward Two, so I'm walking distance from there. I urge everybody in a yellow shirt behind me, especially the younger people that have never heard of Love Canal, Google it, it's shocking. You'll change your mind about what you think this whole project is about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Steph Coronella, I live at 145 Cherry Street in Ashland, Mass. And I couldn't help but, you know, knew exactly what we were going to talk about with Love Canal here. I live next to, shit, I live next to the Superfund site, Nyanza, which is a Love Canal analogy, pretty much. It's one of the largest Superfund sites in Massachusetts. My property actually abuts it. We have a solar cap on it, I get tours of it, because I abut the property, it's disgusting, it smells terrible. However, with enough studies done, enough mitigation done, and enough rail, guardrails, which we have the power to put up, and do the testing on the land, the water, the environmental impacts, we can control and mitigate to some extent that kind of fallout. I don't have a problem with more jobs coming to the area, I don't have a problem with more festivals and everything coming to this area. I went to college at Fitchburg State. I remember going to local bazooka over at the airport and having a great time, and bringing all of my friends from Boston to come west for once, go west of the 95 Belt, and bring their money here, and hang out, and have, and experience the wonderful things that this, this area has to offer. So, yes, there are going to be some impacts to the community, no matter which way we slice this, but we do have the ability to choose and to put those guardrails up on how we're going to get this job done. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address us this evening? And for a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council this evening?
My name is Catherine Crowley, I live at 268 Spruce Street in Lemonster. My husband and I have lived here for a little over 21 years, and we love this community. And it's a great community, and I feel that having a racetrack on a landfill is going to really change the footprint of the community. I know that betting on races is allowed at 18-years-old, and I found that out, I read about that and thought, wow, that's pretty shocking, you got to be 21 to go into a casino and to use FanDuel, all those different little things that people do. So, that was, that was a bit shocking. I saw a woman up here a few, I'm so nervous, I saw, I saw a woman up here a few meetings ago stating that she wanted to have her, her young boys working, needed a job somewhere, and I thought, wow, wouldn't that be great? If they're 18, they could not only work there, but they could bet on horse racing there, online or offline, and I thought, wow, that's, that's pretty sad. And I know that people gamble anyways, I know people gamble on their phone anyways, but it's different having a physical thing there. And I do live near, near it, I'm within walking distance. It worries me about some, something being built on a landfill, and especially for the abutters, I mean, they're going to be looking at this in their front and back yards, and I think that's really sad. It's not what Lemonster's about. It's the first thing that people are going to be coming into and seeing a racetrack. It just changes the whole footprint, and this will be your legacy if this gets voted in. It'll be the mayor's legacy, it'll be the council's legacy, and frankly, I probably won't stay in Lemonster. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address us this evening?
Yes, Tony Montalvo, 32 Gerard Street, Fitchburg. I just want to reiterate again what you guys have been hearing about jobs, right? Everybody knows and feels the economy and the weight of what it is right now to go to your grocery stores and afford the food, and the gas, and the uncertainty of, you know, everything looming right now with politics and the economy, and this is why we keep talking about the good-paying jobs, right? And not just that, but has mentioned the money coming into the city as well, people visiting, and, you know, Lemonster could be, you know, that place that, you know, people can say, hey, let's go to Lemonster, let's go meet, and Fitchburg benefits, the restaurants. So, yeah, I just want to reiterate again why we keep talking about the good-paying jobs, because it's definitely needed out there.
Thank you, sir. Is there any member of the public that hasn't addressed us that wishes to?
Peter Higginson, 333 Elm Street. I appreciate the need for good-paying union jobs, but in the materials given out by the fairgrounds, it's 35 to 40 full-time jobs, not including all the part-time jobs when they're actually going to have larger events. So, it's not quite that big of an impact for the community in terms of job growth. However, what could be a big impact is the environmental impact with building on top of an unlined landfill, not, they're not going to put permanent structures, but the amount of dirt, and I know this has already been said, but I just want to reiterate, where it's right next to the Nashville River, it's built on top of an old wetlands, and we don't have any of the data yet for methane testing and things like that for the site, and that stuff takes a long time. The Meepa review, they got to go through DEP, and in the HCA, there's four years, you have a four-year timeline, and then they owe us nothing. And so, when you're talking about a million dollars, we got to get through years of testing and reviews and approvals before we're going to see any of the, of the big money that they're promising, and so it's not guaranteed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there any other member of the public that wishes to address us this evening? And a second time, and a third time, and I will declare the public forum closed. Thank you very much. Now go into, well, we're well past seven o'clock, let's start the meeting.
My pleasure to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands my nation under God, and the result will never be injustice for all.
Well, now I'll take the roll call of councils in attendance, starting with Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Arndinger.
Present.
Councilor Noseworthy.
Present.
Councilor Tossi.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Robbins.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
I shall be marked present, we have eight councils in attendance this evening. The chairwoman of records is not here this evening, so I think we'll just put all those over, unless anybody has any objection on the minutes. Then we'll go to communications from the mayor, starting with C-107.
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request that appropriation be made to the Police Department's salary and wages account, the same to be transferred from the opioid stabilization fund. This is in regard to the amount appropriated as design designated to fund the fiscal year 26 salary of the jailed diversion clinician. Salary is $68,000, health benefits $9,513.06, and the total is $77,513.06.
C-107 is referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C-107 has been given regular course. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yep, through the chair to the finance chair. When I was looking at this, this, I think, is a new position, right? And I thought it was in the budget.
No, they, the mayor has committed to taking this from the opioid stabilization fund.
Right.
That was mentioned, I think for the next three fiscal years at least, he's going to be taking that from there.
Okay, I'm going to double-check the budget, because my, I thought that I saw it in the budget, because I remember looking at the additional clinicians, I think, in the police budget.
Well, we approved one on 11/25, C-26, for $68,000. We approved the clinician out of the stabilization fund for the opioid, and he said he's going to do that for at least the next three fiscal years.
So, this is, this is an additional?
No.
New position? A jailed diversion person? I'm confused.
We are going to fund the clinician next fiscal year from the opioid stabilization fund.
That is currently, so is this not, this is the same position?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else set? All right, C-108.
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $4,410 be made to the Art on the Rocks out of the mayor's capital expense line in the general fund, the same amount to be transferred from the opioid stabilization fund.
C-108 is referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C-108, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Thank you. I had questions about this. This event has already happened, it happened about a month ago. So, my questions are through the chair to the finance chair. I'm confused as to why this is, why the, why the request for the $4,000 is coming down now, and when the Health Department scheduled it, where were they expecting to come up with the money to pay for it?
Right.
Because this is after the fact, so I'm just confused. So, if you could just clarify that, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Councilor. Everybody else, okay. C-109.
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $8,785.59 be made to the Lemonster Public Television, the same to be transferred from the PEG excess and cable fund. These are quarter-three funds to be dispersed per our contract.
C-109 is referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C-109 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with 52-25.
Mary Gleason of 12, 12 Fifth Avenue, Lemonster, Mass., requests the following. Per the Lemonster ordinance, Article 1, General Regulation, Section 2214 dot 14, adoption and amendment 14 dot 14, we, at least 20% of the abutters of the city landfill located off Mechanic Street, 670 Mechanic Street, 690 Mechanic Street, and 694 Mechanic Street, are protesting petition 4725, which seeks to create the Fairgrounds overlay district, and are requesting, per the affirmation zoning ordinance, that adoption of petition 4725 require a three-quarters vote of the city council. Petition 4725, which seeks to create the Fairgrounds overlay district, not only clearly fails to meet the purposes it lists, 34 dot 1 dot 2, enhance revitalization and growth while preserving the integrity of adjacent neighborhoods, and 34 dot 1 dot 3, reduce conflict caused by incompatible redevelopment. It will, to our detriment... It will, to our determination, actually have the opposite effects. Additionally, the uses stated for purpose 34 dot 1 dot 1 in petition 4725 are not active recreation, but commercial and ones that will bear negative impacts on the entire community of Lemonster.
52-25 is referred to the chairwoman of legal affairs.
Thank you very much. So this is kind of an odd petition for us, because it really does not require a vote. It's a petition submitted according to our zoning ordinance, reference Section 22 dot 14 dot 14. So my understanding is that the petitioner has obtained the number of signatures. And have they been certified, Madam Clerk? Okay. So what that means is that there is no vote required, because once the signatures are certified and the city clerk has determined that the petitioner has met the threshold that is in the zoning ordinance, we are required on 47-25 that petition, if it passes, it has to pass by a three-quarters vote. And that means seven votes out of the nine. So there's no vote required, Mr. President? Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's confirmed by the city attorney that is working on this, Amy Wiswell. I asked her for an opinion on that, and she confirms exactly what you're saying. So instead of the normal supermajority, six votes for zoning ordinance, 47-25 will now require, based on the certification by the city clerk, seven votes to pass.
Okay. So there is really, there is no, there is no action required?
No.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to matters before the city council, starting with the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The opioid stabilization fund, we started with a balance of $518,703.20. We have spent, or we will have spent, $191,842.67, which will leave us with a balance of 573, and then, sorry, then there will proceeds, sorry, there will proceeds from the state in the amount of $191,842.67. We will have spent $137,410. That will leave us with a balance of $573,135.87. The capital stabilization, we began with a balance of $2,193,191.62, provided that we pass C-100, which would add 2.4 million. We'll end up with a balance of $4,593,191.62. The regular stabilization fund, we began with a balance of $22,927,553.81. We've earned interest in the amount of $1,043,282.23. We've replenished the fund 1.25 million. And that leaves us with a balance of $24,086,485.59. And that is the financial report, Mr. President.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to.
Oh, sorry, did I forget one? Yeah, sorry. One, hold on.
Okay, that's a question.
Yeah, here we go. The free cash, thank you. We started with $15,891. We've spent, or we will have spent, provided the final items that are on there for this fiscal year tonight, $14,910,898.27. And that would leave us with a balance of $97,992.73.
Thank you, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr. Yes?
At the last meeting, I had a question about the dates for the free cash summary, the free cash, in the stabilization, I guess. Because normally, we have dates on the left-hand column that show us when the appropriation was voted on. And I wasn't sure why those disappeared from the free cash summary. So could you, could you check on that?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, I will double-check. And I noticed, yeah, like she didn't put the date on C-100 either, on the stabilization, city stabilization, the capital stabilization fund. I'll find out. And I'll ask you if we can get a copy with all the dates on here, so we have them, you know, on record, okay?
Yeah, I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to matters under finance, starting with C-95. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-95, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $52,000 be made to the school department capital account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. These funds will be used to pave areas of Francis Drake Elementary School parking lot and other paving needs. As you know, recently, the city worked closely with Mass DOT on a safe roads, a safe routes to school project. The scope of that project included new sidewalks, paving drainage improvements, intersection upgrades, and pedestrian safety improvements. This grant was a total of $3 million in upgrades on Visculate Avenue from Mechanic Street to Lancaster Street with no match to the city. This appropriation is for paving at Francis Drake that was unable to be included in the scope of the Mass DOT grant due to it not being in the public way. This final paving will ensure safety for staff, students, and visitors for years to come. So basically, as everyone knows, it was a project done over there, and they just want to, you know, add on to the project by using some local money to get some much-needed improvements to the lot. And it'd be, and we had a subcommittee meeting on this, and the recommendation from finance was to grant.
You heard the MS recommendation from finance to grant C-95. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. By a vote of eight to zero, C-95 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $52,000 be made to the school department capital account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea. Anyone opposed? The order was adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-96.
C-96, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $100,000 be made to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President, this one I am abstaining. I now ask that you ask the other member of finance if he can handle this.
You are a committee of one, Councilor Tossi. Take it away.
Thank you. Petition, C-96, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor requests that an appropriation of $100,000 be made to the fire department public safety overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. We did have a subcommittee meeting on this last week, of which all three of us gave it approval. So I would ask that we, we would vote and give it an approval.
Grant C-96?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion, Council? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-96, please recognize the usual manner. By a vote of seven to zero, C-96 has been granted. Do you have an order, Councilor Tossi?
Yes, I order that the appropriation for $100,000 be made to the fire department public safety overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Move for the adoption of the order. Are there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea. Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. On to C-97, and the chairman's back.
C-97, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $15,000 be made to the library's operating account, the same amount to transfer from the library's state aid to public libraries account. This is regarding to allow the library to place an HVAC mini-split that is no longer functioning. We also had a subcommittee meeting on this, and the recommendation of finance was to grant.
You heard the MS recommendation of finance to grant C-97. Is there any additional discussion? Councilor Frida?
Just a quick question. Is that affecting the library tonight? Because I noticed the mayor is saying it's going to be used as a cooling center after nine o'clock. So is that affecting it?
I would think not the whole library, but certainly just.
We have a lot of, we have mini-splits, and we have a regular, we have a lot of air conditioning in there, so, no, it should be up and running as usual. So, thank you for the question, Councilor. Anything else? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-97, please indicate in the usual manner. C-97 is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $15,000 be made to the library's operating account, the same amount to be transferred from the library's state aid to public libraries account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea. Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-98.
C-98, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $5,000 be made to the library's operating account, the same amount to be transferred from the library's state aid to public libraries account. This is to allow the library to purchase, set up, and install LibMaps software. We did have a subcommittee meeting on this, and we, the recommendation was to grant. But I just want to explain just quickly what this software is. It's a product that will help the library users navigate the building to find books, computers, study spaces, bathrooms, service desks, and other important locations. Navigation throughout the library, throughout the building, has long been identified as an important challenge to address, and this product will go a long way to address it. So I just also want to add, too, that, you know, this, as we all know, we've dealt with software with the police department for different things, that this is also going to require an ongoing commitment, which the money, from what I'm hearing, will come in the future from this fund again, but probably looking at about $2,600 next year to maintain this software. So just something to keep in mind. But it was the recommendation of finance to grant C-98.
All right, well, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-98, please indicate in the usual manner. C-98 has been granted by a vote of eight to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $5,000 be made to the library's operating account, the same amount to be transferred from the library's state aid to public libraries account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea. Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-99.
C-99, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $2,769,856 be made to the police station capital project fund, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This appropriation will be used to pay down the outstanding short-term debt associated with the construction of the police station. So this is from what I've, after speaking to the comptroller, this will be our final payment. It will bring us to a total of $10 million that we have paid cash for the police station. So we only had to borrow long-term $20 million. So this has been something that we should be proud of. It saved the taxpayers a lot of money. And it was the recommendation of finance to grant C-99.
You've heard the recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-99. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-99, please indicate in the usual manner. Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, C-99 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, sorry. I saw, somebody else in the audience had to hand. Threw me off. Likely excuse. Likely excuse, sorry. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $2,769,856 be made to the police station capital project fund, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea. Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-100.
C-100, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $2,400,000 be made to the capital stabilization fund, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. These funds will be reserved for capital expenses. While the capital plan for the year is still being finalized, setting aside, these funds will now, now will ensure that they are available when the plan is complete. So obviously, this is, putting these into the capital stabilization fund is different than the regular stabilization fund. These are going to be earmarked for capital projects. And they will not, unlike the money that we take out of the regular stabilization fund, we make a commitment to repay at the end of the year, the end of fiscal year. These will not, they'll be, after their one-time use, they'll be spent out of there, and they will not be replenished. And this also will, will allow us to not have these funds get turned, you know, back to free cash, so that they'll be available at our disposal. If they wanted to, they could send an appropriation down out of here at the next meeting for the first time, versus having to, you know, wait till free cash is certified. So it was the recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-100.
You've heard the recommendation of finance to grant C-100. Is there any further discussion, Councilor Frida?
Through the chair. I'm assuming this is still a supermajority vote to take money out of that fund?
That is correct. I did, I did ask the comptroller that, that when they send down an appropriation, that it is going to take a two-thirds vote to take it out of there as well. So there'll be scrutiny before we approve any of these funds on what they, what the corner office determines they want their final purpose to be.
All set, Councilor? Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor, please recognize the usual manner. C-100 is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $2,400,000 be made to the capital stabilization fund, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea. Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-101.
C-101, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor requested a transfer of $54,204.31 from the snow and ice overtime account to the snow and ice expense account. So basically, C-101 and C-102 are related. If you take those two amounts of money, it totals the amount that we need to clean up and finish the rest of the fiscal year. The reason why we have two different appropriations is because they're coming from two different sources. Obviously, you know, the leftover money we had in the snow and ice overtime account, I'm sorry, in this, in the, I'm saying that correctly, in the snow and ice overtime account is obviously not going to be used. So we're going to put that to the expense, and I'd ask that you check with members of my, the other member of my committee to grant C-101.
Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-101. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-101, please recognize the usual manner. C-101 is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $54,204.31 from the snow and ice overtime account to the snow and ice expense account, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea. Anyone opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, the order's been adopted. Moving on to the corollary, C-102.
C-102, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $117,680.43 be made to the snow and ice expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Once again, we're just trying to do some final cleaning up before the end of the fiscal year, moving these funds around. And it would be my, well, it was the recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-102.
You've heard the request, I mean, I'm sorry, you heard the recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-102. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-102, please recognize the usual manner. C-102 has been granted by a vote of eight to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $117,680.43 be made to the snow and ice expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea. Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-103, in legal affairs.
C-103, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor requests the adoption of the dispatch 2025 to 2027 salary scale. The FY 2025 retroactive portion will be paid from collective bargaining regarding updated salary scales from contract settlement from FY 2025 to FY 2027 agreement.
Merriam Avenue, Washington Street to Blossom Street, North Side, 745 linear feet, and
At our last meeting, I had asked for some more information, and I could get the contract.
School Street sidewalk by Courthouse on the East Side for 170 linear feet.
Thank you very much. And all looked in order to me after I had gone through it.
So it would be our recommendation to grant C-104.
So my recommendation would be to grant C-103, and I'd ask you to pull my committee.
Thank you, councilor. You've heard the MS recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-104. Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation, actually, well, you've heard the MS recommendation Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-104, please recognize your usual manner. of Legal Affairs to grant C-103. By a vote of eight to zero, C-104 has been granted. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, this will be by roll call votes, starting with Councilor David Cormier. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $300,000 be made to the Public Works Sidewalk Account, the same
Yea.
Councilor Hardinger.
Yea.
amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Councilor Noseworthy.
Yea.
Councilor Tossi.
Move for the adoption of the order.
Yea.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr. You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-105.
C-105 Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $200,000 be made to the Public Works Sidewalk Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. These funds will be used to upgrade and maintain sidewalks around the city. The biggest question that we had, and rightfully so on this, was what sidewalks were we looking at? And the answer we got was Washington Street from Sterns Ave. to McKay Street, West Side, for 1,180 linear feet. Merrimah Avenue, Washington Street to Blossom Street, North Side, 745 linear feet, and School Street sidewalk by Courthouse on the East Side for 170 linear feet. So it would be our recommendation to grant C-104.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-104. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-104, please recognize your usual manner. By a vote of eight to zero, C-104 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $300,000 be made to the Public Works Sidewalk Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-105.
C-105 Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests that an appropriation of $20,000 be made to the Clerk Advertising Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. These funds will be used to support the additional advertisements that have been required this year. Obviously, there's been a lot of advertising this year. The salary grids have been very expensive. We've settled all those contracts. Those all had to be published, and so that was what this expense was, and we need to pay these bills so that we can make sure that we are good before the end of the fiscal year, and it was our recommendation to grant C-105.
You've heard the MS recommendation of Finance to grant C-105. Is there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner. C-105 is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $20,000 be made to the Clerk Advertising Account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed? The order has been adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to finally, C-106.
C-106 Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $2,000 be made to the Planning Activities Account, same amount to be transferred from the Disability Commission Fines Account. Basically, what this is, and there's a letter here, I can read it, that the commission is looking to spend some of this year's budget and allocate it to the cost of the ADA-approved wheelchair access porta-potties needed for the city's events. As you are aware, the city has always provided handicapped accessible porta-potties, but they were not mandated ADA wheelchair accessible ones. This request is made after conferring with Ms. Melissa Task and Greg Chapdaling, who informed us that they were able to find a vendor that will provide us with the mandated porta-potty. Our commission voted to take funds as a one-time request from our budget for the fiscal year. It was the recommendation of Finance to grant C-106.
Any additional discussion? Yes, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Through the chair, to the Finance Chair. Is, are we purchasing this?
Oh, no, these are rentals.
These are rentals, so it's a $2,000 cost for the rental. Okay, I just, it wasn't clear to me, thank you.
For all the city events, for the next.
For all city events. Oh, for the fiscal year, this will cover those?
Correct.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner. The C-106 has been granted by a vote of eight to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $2,000 be made to the Planning Activities Account, same amount to be transferred from the Disability Commission Fines Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to Ways and Means, Councilor Oringer, you're playing pinch hitter tonight.
Mr. President, I likewise have to abstain from this one. It does involve, it's partially owned by my employer.
So you are a committee of one, Councilor Oringer. Just want to make one point, these are not scheduled until our next meeting in July. However, we're going to ask myself and the clerk, based on some scheduling and timing, that we do Jordan Vashon, we make a slight difference and move that up to 6:05 from 6:10. That's okay with you?
Agreed, yeah.
All right, so I think in block, you can just read these and we'll do these in block as a further time recommendation, I assume?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
C-91 Dean J. Mazzarella requests the appointment of the following individuals to the Limister Housing Authority, term to expire 4/15/2030. Mary Ellen Hurley, 140 Smith Street, Limister, Mass. Tamara Castro Camacho, 82 Heron Way, Limister, Mass. This was given further time until 7:14, on 7:14 at 6:00 PM, and that's the.
You can read the next one, too. We'll do them.
Dean J. Mazzarella requests the following individual to the Conservation Commission, term to expire 4/15/28. Jordan Vashon, 73 West Street, Limister, Mass. And this was given further time, it was on 7:14 at 6:05 PM.
So the recommendation, I assume is for.
Is to give her the time.
Any additional discussion?
Sorry, Mr. President, I'm not abstaining from these. I was looking at 5125 and skipping over these.
You're back for the block.
Sorry, I'm back, sorry.
Okay, do you want to discuss it?
No, I'm good.
Good.
Further time is good.
All in favor of further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Okay, both of those have been given further time with that one little schedule amendment on C-92. Moving on to Public Safety Committee, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. 5125 Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England Inc. requests permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Walnut Street, National Grid, to install one jointly-owned pole on Walnut Street beginning at a point approximately 126 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Washington Street, installing P-16-2 in the right-of-way, Limister, Massachusetts. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. This was on our agenda for the first time at the last meeting. It was given regular course, and we have a public hearing scheduled for July 14th at 6:15 PM. So seeing such, I would ask that we give this further time, and I'd ask that you check with the other two members of my committee.
And that's Councilor Frida?
I agree.
And Councilor Shalfo, I think? Oh, Councilor Noseworthy, I'm sorry.
That's right, I agree.
Okay. I am likewise going to ask to amend the time of that a little bit, if we could. I think Ms. Vashon's coming in at 6:05, right?
Correct.
Let's, let's schedule that for 6:06, if that's okay?
Sounds good to me.
The chairman? All right, that being said.
Do you want to give her at least two minutes?
Well, we can go over, but we can't go, we can't start early.
That's right.
We want to move things along that night. We'll give her all the time she needs.
Can the clerk just make sure that National Grid knows that it's being moved up so they are here?
Good point.
Thank you.
All those in favor of further time and the new time, please indicate your usual manner. All right, by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to Legal Affairs and C-94, is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am. C-94 Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests an increase of $1,000 for Limister School Committee members along with an annual cost of living increase based on the Consumer Price Index. This increase would begin at the start of next term. So at our last hearing, I did ask for some information because we did get a letter from the Limister School Committee dated June 4th, and through the chair to the city clerk. Did you get anything back, I asked, from the mayor?
No, I have not.
And an explanation? Okay.
No, I have not.
So the, the question from the school committee, they were looking for clarification on the amount, I'll read, I'll read it. So this is dated from Limister Public Schools, June 4th, 2025. At the June 2nd, 2025 School Committee meeting, the committee made the following motion with a vote of eight to zero. Motion, Josh Bowdrich made a motion to seek further clarification from the City Council as to how the compensation increase of $1,000 was presented to the council for a vote, including all communications and discussions, and who participated in the discussions, seconded by Melissa Bible. Motion carried eight to zero, respectfully Chris Silverman. So I don't have any additional information other than what we have from the mayor, who is requesting a $1,000 increase for the school committee in the next term.
Further time? I mean, it's.
Absolutely, yep. So that, I mean, that's my inclination. I hate to keep dragging this forward, but I don't have any information.
Well, we have it, we have it scheduled for a public hearing on the 14th anyway, so we can't do anything tonight.
I missed that, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we will, I'll ask for further time then, and I would, please ask my committee.
Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of Legal Affairs to give C-94 further time. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time, please indicate in your usual manner. All right, so that's further time. Moving on to C-50, I have a conflict. The acting president is not here. As a result, I think Councilor Frida, you get the chair as the senior person.
Yep. It's you.
Thank you, Mr. President. C-50 Dean J. Mazzarella requests the City Council hold a hearing on Middlesex Integrative Medicine Special Permit to Operate a Marijuana-Growing Facility. We had a meeting, actually a special meeting, on May 27th. We had all the, all the principals of this whole issue in with us on the 27th, after speaking with them a couple of times, the owner of the property, the representatives for the facilities, and we had our attorney here as well from KP Law, and it was a unanimous decision at the last meeting to have, to give the marijuana facility business until June 30th to vacate the property. They've not abided by any of the, of the recommendations or any of the agreements that they've had in the past six years. We haven't gotten the money we should have gotten from these. The host agreements were useless. There is no recourse when there is receivership. So the recommendation was to have them vacate on the 30th. They, they totally ignored a cease and desist order that was presented to them previously. So upon attorney's recommendation with the committee, that was our recommendation, and I believe it still holds. If they are not vacating, then the attorneys will pursue the issue in court. So it's a recommendation of the full subcommittee. So the recommendation is to grant C-50. Any questions or comments?
If they don't comply, as has been their history, can we physically go down there and put a padlock on the place?
I would think that would be a recommendation by the attorney.
Okay.
He will deal with the code enforcement officer or the police as well, but I think the court action would be the process.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Robbins?
Just a question on the process. Didn't we already vote on this at the special meeting?
We did.
Yeah.
We did, but I'm, I'm thinking that this is the second. We voted to put it on the agenda and get it done, a special meeting, so this is probably just kind of a re-certification, is my understanding?
I, I was under the impression we voted on this at a special meeting, and it's gone, it shouldn't even be on the agenda, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't know where it is.
I think it's, it's done. It's, it's done.
Is that your, is that your understanding, too? I mean.
I thought it was a backup.
You were here, huh?
I thought it was just a backup, just having the agenda, a backup, to share with the rest.
All right, so if it's, if it's already set, we're good, yeah.
Yeah.
It's okay, you can do that. Thank you.
Okay, on to 41-25 in Legal Affairs, is the chairwoman ready to report?
I sure am. 4125 Lisa Nugent, 45 Beth Avenue, Limister, requests that the City Council prohibit all horse and dog racing and any associated betting or wagering anywhere within Limister, Massachusetts by the following. Can we waive the rest of the?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good, okay. We got it allowed at the numerous public hearings. So earlier this evening, we had a public hearing that was open basically and closed because we are continuing this to our next regular meeting on July 14th. We need to establish a public hearing time.
6:10 PM, is what I'm suggesting.
6:10 PM, so my recommendation would be further time with a public hearing scheduled on the same evening, 7:14 at 6:10 PM.
Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
Recommendation of Legal Affairs is to give 41-25 further time to 7:14 at 6:10 PM for the public hearing. All those in favor, please recognize your usual manner. Okay, that may be done. Moving on to 47-25.
4725 Brian R. Falk, Attorney on behalf of Crossroads Office Park LLC, requests to adopt the proposed Fairgrounds overlay district zoning amendments, and I would like to waive the rest of the reading.
That's fine.
So earlier this evening, we opened the public hearing on this, and we are going to continue this to our next regular meeting scheduled on July 14th, Monday night, and we need to schedule the public hearing time.
6:20 PM for that one.
6:20 PM. My recommendation would be further time for 4725 with a public hearing scheduled for 6:20 PM on July 14th.
Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
The MS recommendation of Legal Affairs is to continue 47-25 for a public hearing on July 14th at 6:20 PM. All those in favor, please recognize your usual manner.
Any discussion?
Yes, sure, go ahead.
Through the chair, to the Legal Affairs Chair, I know we've seen the emails that you requested the mayor to come down, and, and I would assume tonight was the plan. We have, had we heard any more from him since?
No, I have not heard any more from him. No, I have not heard any more from him. I, I did ask him, you know, to come down with an attorney or bring whoever else he wanted to, and then went to confirm that and didn't hear back. So I will ask the clerk to reach out again for our next meeting, and see if you can get a confirmation that the mayor will in fact come down with somebody that can address any questions about the host community agreement, whoever negotiated that. It wasn't Copman and Page, it was an outside attorney, my understanding is. But anyways, whoever can answer those questions, he should bring down.
I, I feel that this is important. We've heard from the opposition, and we've gotten a lot of information from the opposition. The last meeting we had, the proponents of the project, we have not talked to anybody in our own city, or anybody that's worked on the landfill since the day it was capped. I think it's extremely important to have Woodard and Curran here. People may think that they work for us, they do not. They are LSPs for DEP, they have to report on the condition of, of the landfill on an annual basis. The Alan Benavides, I think, is retired, I don't know, he was with, I'm jogging my memory now, but I think he was with Rust Engineering or Environmental at the time.
Weston and Sampson? Weston and Sampson, I think?
I thought it was Rust Engineering, for some reason, rings a bell. Either way, one of the, he wasn't with Woodard and Curran in the beginning when they capped it. But I think we need to have these people here to say, what was the intent of the capping? Was it for long-term use, was it to never be used again? Was it, what were the recommendations then, or what was the understanding when it was capped? What is it showing in, in the annual reports? I know they're somewhere in City Hall, but they could answer them, and they should be available for us to ask the question. I also think the mayor should be here with the attorney that drew the host agreement, and I think we should take it paragraph by paragraph and say, why do you think this is good for the city? Why do you think this is not good for the city? Why would you not suggest this to the city? I think there's a lot of questions, and we don't have the people in front of us to yet ask these questions. And I think that's really important. I have never voted on this council on anything with this kind of magnitude, that we haven't had our own people or people that have done the work to be able to talk to. We haven't had that on any of this yet, and I think that's a really important piece to this, and I, I think that should be stressed. I mean, I, we can't force the mayor to come down, but I think it's got to be strongly suggested that, that, that he come down with the attorney that was involved with him, so that we have somebody that can, we can answer these questions finally and get this, you know, get our, get my, I want to be satisfied with it. I've had another number of people, and I know we all get the same emails, you know, suggesting that there should be a citywide vote. I'm not so sure that's a bad idea either, and we have the authority to do that as a council. So I think we need to get the answers to these questions so that people feel a little bit comfortable. Even people that are, that are opposed to it still think that we should have a citywide vote. So I think we have to have this debate and this discussion. We're going to have these hearings, we're going to, we've listened to, to a number of people, and we haven't debated this amongst ourselves. So we're going to do that in 10 minutes before we make a major vote like this at the next meeting. So I, I think we need to, and that's, this is just my opinion, but that's my suggestion.
Well, here's my opinion. We, you're right about a lot of that, but it's not our burden of proof to satisfy the city council that all of the elements of this thing that are in the best interest, that culminate in a decision as to what is in the best interest of the city, that's, that's on the proponents of both of those petitions. And I would certainly encourage them and/or the mayor to bring down whatever will help us reach that decision. And then at that point, this body has responsibility, after asking, asking questions, every individual council, asking his or her questions, getting the best information we can, which I'm sure that we all understand, that's our responsibility, and, and reaching a decision if we can. I think that's where it's at, and it, it's been kicking around for a long time. I mean, I think both sides deserve an answer. Bring your best information down, and we'll have plenty of questions, I'm sure. So Counselor Chalfo, is that for?
Yeah, thank you very much. Through the chair to the ward at large counselor. I agree with the council president that I don't think that we should shoulder the burden of proof to, you know, either prove in one way or another, you know, the, whether or not we think a project is good. People come down, they ask us for zoning changes all the time. We've voted on, you know, zoning changes, we've voted on large projects, small projects, all kinds of projects in between. This has been going on since February, and the information is available. I'm not waiting for anybody to come down and tell me what I want to know. I'm going out and I'm finding the information that I need to know. All of the reports, Woodward and Curran, they have been doing quarterly testing at the landfill for the last 30 years since it was closed. They file reports with the health department here, they file reports with the DEP. All of these quarterly reports and the actual reports that are monitoring, you know, the levels of benzene and methane, those are all on file with the health department. So, you know, we can go through the mayor's office if you want, you can get as many copies of the, you know, materials, you can go back as far as you want, you can go as recent as you want. So that information is available, you know, we can have Woodward and Curran come down and summarize the last 30 years of whatever. You know, I've done a lot of reading myself. I would encourage everybody, you know, look at the, look, look at the written reports, look at what DEP has said, and draw your own conclusions. I mean, that's how you really, that's how I evaluate things. I'm not going to tell anybody else how to do their work. I collect my own information, I listen to the people on both sides, and then I, in my head, I listen to constituents, and then, you know, I kind of sort it all out, and at the end of the day, make a decision. So, you know, the mayor has been asked formally, informally, in a number of different ways to come on down, bring whoever he wants to answer questions about the HCA, because we tried to get answers about the HCA, I think, that we had at the public hearing, the initial public hearing for 4725. And I didn't really hear, I, I didn't get any satisfactory answers, I got a lot of, you know, well, the attorneys will tell us, or this, or this, or that. So, you know, if anybody can provide more clarity on the HCA, that's great. You know, if we want to have HB, VHB come down and, you know, give us a summary of the last 30 years of testing, if that makes you happy, that's fine. But I would really encourage people, every single counselor here, to go read the stuff. You know, we've gotten a lot of information from the proponents. We've gotten a lot of information, you know, submitted from people who oppose the projects. So, you know, again, the, the information is there, it's, you got to find it.
Counselor Frida?
Yeah, I don't disagree with anything anybody's saying, but I don't think that we need to go look and get, I've read everything as well. I've been here long enough to, to know a lot of it that's happened and that's been reported. But I'm talking about doing it publicly so that the public understands what we're doing and how we're making a decision. We can read everything, and we can get all the information, and we can satisfy ourselves on how we vote, but I think we have an obligation to let the public know how we're voting and why we are. And I, and I think a lot of that, I don't see why that's a problem, to have people that have done the job for the city sit in front of us and be able to answer questions. And I don't look at it as requiring the burden of proof being on us to do that. I think it's for our own satisfaction and get my, I'll say mine, not ours. I, I think as a council, we should be doing that. So that's my opinion.
I don't think anyone's here is precluding anybody from coming down here to say whatever they know, believe. I'm listening to everybody that comes down here, fully, with my ears wide open, so, all right.
We have, we have, we have the ability as a council to insist that people come down here, and why would we not do that?
Well, I, I mean.
We can insist as much as we want, but doesn't mean they're going to come.
We can invite them, we can ask them.
I think, you know, look at, both sides have, have a stake, and they, they bring their people. That's how I look at it. All right, so we have to vote on establishing the public hearing in further time. So all those in favor of the public hearing at 6:20 on 7:14, please recognize usual manner? All right, that's done. We don't have any listed new business or old business, community calendar, council, do you have a old business or new business?
It's really not the calendar, but I just wanted to make mention of congratulations to Joe Bolton. He, he has been pushing for two years to have this Arcadia Festival, to support the culture of, of the French Canadians, and he did, I think, to his own surprise, an incredible success at the Eagles. There wasn't a place to park, wasn't a place to move. I know I saw Counselor Robbins there. It was, I mean, it was a perfect day besides, but it was unbelievable, the amount of people that were there and the amount of French food that was just everywhere. So congratulations to him, I know he's worked hard and he's persevered to get to that point.
Very good.
And also to Mark Dagnall, we all know what, what, you know, our Limister guy to, to be the champ now, so that's.
All right, I just want to, I just want to say on that note, yesterday, I mean, on Saturday, I had the pleasure for the second time of participating in the Noah Gray Football Clinic. And anybody who knows anything about Noah Gray knows that he represents the city very well. He's a great guy, very humble, he never forgot where he came from, and he is so good with this youth. And having talked to a lot of these kids participating in that, those clinics this year and last year, I can tell you that he is already rubbing off on these kids. These kids are, have a really great attitude. Some of you know that most of his lunches at Limister High, Noah Gray took with the LCE kids. Those kids are at the clinic year after year, he's still friends with many of them. It is really heartening to see. Last night, like a lot of you in Limister, I watched the NBA championship game, and the post-game activities, including Coach Dagnall's speech, which he gave, which was so incredibly humble, insightful, respectful. Another great credit, two young men raised by tremendous families in this city, both Limister High School graduates, it gives me the chills, talking, saying, talking to the public about how proud we are of them, their families, and how they represent us. So I see just good things in the future with both of them, and it's a real credit to our city. Counselor Nozworthy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo what the counselor at large said about the event. My, I, my husband's Canadian, we had a great time at the event, I was very impressed, and it was just an overall fantastic event, I look forward to next year. I also just wanted to remind everybody that June is actually Pride Month, and that our own state representative Natalie Higgins is going to be hosting a Pride Pizza and Paint Night on Friday, June 27th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Limister Veterans Center Hall. So they're going to provide pizza and art supplies, and if you go on Facebook, you can sign up for her event. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Counselor Frida?
Just to piggyback on what you said about Noah Gray, I think it's important to note too how he doesn't just support and work with the athletes, he spends so much time with, with the life, life skills kids. And, you know, to continue to do that in the position he's in, it really says a lot about, almost more about his character than anything, I think.
Little story, one of the parents that the life skills kids participated in the LCE program, he calls them, they're twins, and he calls them on every birthday. And one year, their birthday happened to fall in his bye week, which of course in the NFL is your vacation out of, you know, preseason for, you know, drills and all that stuff. It's the only week they have off, and the dad said, don't expect Noah to call this year because this is his only time off, so, and guess what, he called anyway. So just the kind, what kind of a guy he is. So these, both of these guys, Coach Dagnall and Noah, really great credits. I got to meet his mother, Noah Gray's mother, on, for the first time on Saturday. It's no wonder, what a lovely lady, and a real, again, it's no wonder he turned out to be the man he is, so. But we, we're living, we're blessed here in this community, we have been for a long time, so, yes, Counselor Chalfo, is that for?
I was just going to give a shout out to Sandy and Rick Dagnall.
Absolutely.
You know, Mark's parents, they are lovely people, the whole Dagnall family. I picked up some takeout food yesterday, and all of the staff, they were getting ready for the big watch party. So they were all excited, and they, so it was, you know, it was fun, but Sandy and Rick are really nice people, so.
They sure are, they sure are.
Yeah, and her family is, so congratulations to them all.
A hundred percent, yep. All right, a motion adjourned. Second, all in favor? All right, thank you very much.